Get up the line.
Got what? Oh, he did already?
Surely he'll be ready and she's coming in.
Good morning and welcome to the February 9th, 2022 city council meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis, followed by the pledge. If you please stand.
Please pray with me. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of participating in your creation today in our city of Tyler. We ask that you give us guidance in conducting our city council meeting today and give us wisdom in making our decisions that will benefit our fellow citizens. We ask that you bless and protect our city staff in conducting city business today. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag behind the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the December 8th, 2021 meeting.
Leads to approve this presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. R1.
Chief.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Good to see you this morning. Every year, the police department makes a request through ED-COG to participate in a justice assistance grant. Last year, we started our process of switching over our computers as we did the laptops as we go into these new G-TAC A140 tablets that have external antennas and are more ruggedized for our cars. And this year, we're requesting that we go forward there to purchase 10 more of those. That costs $55,000 for a grant request. And based on that, it's recommended the city council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager and the title of police department to apply for and accept grant funding from the East Texas Council of Government in an amount of $55,000 to fund the purchase of G-TAC A140 tablet computers and accessories. And those will all go out there for patrol officers and field.
Any questions for the chief?
Did you print R1?
Wow. Just three at one time.
Stereotyped.
We'll just go this way. Motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. RT. We'll get you next time.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have voted, or the chief, the next resolution. This is dealing with a grant. We apply for the ED-COG State Homeland Security Grant every year. This particular year, as they closed the books on the year 2020, there was some additional money still remaining. And so, we were at, the advisory committee met, the ED-COG Advisory Committee for this particular grant met, and the decision was made that we would get the money that was remaining. So, this is for that remaining fund, which we would use to buy a third EOD Explosive Ordnance Disposal suit, PPE suit. We have two currently, and those will both purchase by ED-COG. And so, this will allow us to buy a third one. So, the request that the city council consider adoption of resolution authorizing submission of an application for the title of our department for and the acceptance of grant funding through the Office of the Texas Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division and for grant funding through the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Government to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and enhancing the City of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Cobble?
A second.
Okay. We got a motion by McKeller, second by Hainey. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. You gotta be quicker.
I wasn't.
You need to find out which one's the mayor's bat here. Maybe he's not hearing you.
Morning, Council. I'm Lieutenant Sheffield with the Tyler Police Department. I'm a supervisor in our criminal investigations division. We appreciate the opportunity to come to you today to present a proposal for a city ordinance that specifically addresses residency restrictions for sex offenders. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, historical perspective on the ordinance itself, we began working on this ordinance in the summer. I want to thank legal, city legal, and GIS for assisting us with preparing the legal research and review of some other cities ordinances, as well as GIS, as you'll see in the presentation to come by Detective Simmington. They did a lot of work on providing us with these zones, address plots, as well as providing a searchable map that we have ready to go where you can just type in an address to see if it falls within the specific child buffer or child safety zones that we're asking in the ordinance. Other cities, if this should pass when you vote on it, other cities similar to the size of Tyler that already have this specific residency restriction ordinance, Mesquite, Denton, Carrollton, Wichita Falls, Kaline, Allen. At last count, I think there were around 65 or 66 cities in the state of Texas that had this specific ordinance that was allowed from a House bill in a previous legislative session. So, at this point, to go over the presentation specifically, I want to introduce our resident expert. He's our sex offender register officer, Detective Robbie Simmington.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Detective Simmington with Tyler Police Department. I'm currently assigned as the sex offender investigator for the city. We started working on this back in the summer when I brought to the attention, to the chief and the supervision, about other cities that had, actually had this ordinance enacted, even around our area, like Lindell, Wythe House, things like that. I'm going to go over some of the highlights of the ordinance itself. Anytime you have any questions, feel free to ask. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. The child safety zone ordinance is basically, it makes it unlawful for a sex offender who has a conviction for a child offense to reside within 1,000 feet of child safety zones, which would include parks, playgrounds, daycare, schools, those types of things. It'll be a misdemeanor offense, a tickle offense, which will be able to take at them if a person is still in that area after they've been told that they cannot be there, living in that area. It'll be a tickle offense of a class C misdemeanor, and they'll be able to issue a ticket every single day that they have not moved. Also, on the ordinance, it'll include that sex offenders cannot leave their lights on between the hours of 4:00 and 11:00 p.m. on October 30th, 31st, when our children are out doing trick-or-treating. So, they'll know that they cannot do that. We're going to send out a letter to all the offenders that we have in the city so they understand what the ordinance states and what they can or cannot do. The child safety zone map, as Lieutenant Sheffield said, we've worked with GIS to put together a map. It's actually, we can interact with it. You can type in any information you want in there as far as an address. It'll tell you if that address falls within the child safety zone. It shows the actual buffers, 1,000-foot buffers in red around that child safety zone, also the schools, the daycares, the pages we mentioned before. Any updates or changes to that map, I'll work with, or whoever's in my position if I'm gone, will work with GIS to help update that information to make sure it's current with any new schools that we build, any new daycares, playgrounds, those types of things. The map's going to be available both for the public on our website, so far we talked about it being on our website, and also the city website. Then you go in there and you click the link. And again, like I said, it's interactive as far as putting their address in. So, if I have an offender who's not sure if they're living in a zone or they want to move to the city, because I have people that call me all the time, hey, does Tyler have a child safety zone or zones where I can or cannot live? They never really refer to it as a child safety zone, just an ordinance that keeps them from living in certain areas. And at this time, I tell them, no, they can live anywhere they want, as long as they're on probation or parole. But they'll be able to go in there, type in the address that they're wanting to move to, and they'll see if it falls in there. I'll do the same thing. That way, I can make sure they understand that you cannot move to that address if the ordinance is enacted. Here's a map that kind of gives an overview of what the, what it looks like. If you look up in the top left where it's Lindsey Park, Lindsey Park is outside of our jurisdiction, but we are in control of actually the park itself because it belongs to the city. So, that red buffer zone around it, I worked with Zach at GIS, we've taken that off there and just showed the actual park itself in red, not that we're going to live in the park, but to show that it actually belongs to us. It does look like there's a lot of areas, but there's a lot more areas where people can or cannot, can live within the city also. There's one question I've had quite a bit about exemptions. I call a grandfather. Once the ordinance is enacted, we already have 196 sex offenders who live within the city of Tyler. Of those 196, 84 currently live within a child safety zone that's on that map. Of those 84, only 78 of those are having offenses against children. So, if you have, they have offenders, if we have offenders have adult victims, they will not be included in the actual residency where they can or cannot live. It's basically just for offenders who have offenses against children under the age of 17.
So, are you saying that they have to move or don't have to move?
They do not have to move. They'll be grandfathered because they're already living in their residence. We're not going to make them, can't make them move to another place. Some have already owned homes and everything else. So, they'll be grandfathered, and they can live where they're at once the ordinance is enacted. But if they at some point in time decide to move or do move, then they are subject to the ordinance. And also, the ones who are, like I told you earlier, they're, they call in to ask if they can live in City Tyler, certain areas, it'll affect the ones moving in. So, it keeps anyone else from moving in and just living where they want, across the street from schools, playgrounds, daycare, those types of things. We're also going to put together a letter and working with the chief to send out to all of our offenders who are currently registered with the City of Tyler so they understand what the ordinance is, where they can read the ordinance, if it impacts them or not. I'm sure if it's enacted, I'm going to get a lot of phone calls from them because I've already been asked a lot of questions from probation officers, parole, also from offenders who are already living here and kind of have an idea that we're going to do this. So, again, there's a letter just going to go out to them to help them understand what they can and cannot do. That's basically the highlight of the ordinance.
Will we know as residents if we have sex offenders that live in our areas? How will we know?
As a resident, you can look, Texas has a, the Texas State Sex Offender Registry. They can go into that and actually type in their area and find out if there's anyone who lives within that area.
You know, I've had that on my phone in the past, just having kids and grandkids, and it's amazing. I mean, they're just all over the city. So, where do they, where does this sex offender app get their data from you guys?
I'm not sure what app you're speaking of, sir.
It's called, it's just called Sex Offender App.
Oh, the DPS? It's the Texas Department of Public Safety. They're the ones who manage the entire sex offender registry program for the state of Texas. So, that, all that information comes directly from the registrar, is what I'm considered as a sex offender investigator. I'm the registrar for the City of Tyler. So, any, any sex offender who moves into the city has to register with me and the county with Detective Scott over the county. And all the information we get, if they're released from prison, the TDC actually puts that information into the state registry, and it's my responsibility to meet with them if they have an annual verification. They see me once a year around their birthday or quarterly every 90 days, and I make sure all that information is updated. They sit with me in person. In front of me, we go over all of it and sign all the paperwork to make sure there's nothing being missed, and I make sure I update that information every month. So, I believe the information that you're saying, Mr. Mayor, is the information they're getting is actually coming from the registry itself, Texas.
So, if anybody wants to see where sex offenders live in the city of Tyler, that's probably an accurate source.
Yes, sir.
Then once, if we approve this ordinance, then we can go to the city website, the PD's website, and it'll show where the zones are.
Yes, it'll show the zones. It won't show who lives in the zone or what offenders live in the zones, but it'll show where those zones are at. And if an address, say if you're asking about a certain address, you can put that address in and it'll tell you if it's within that zone or outside.
At one time, was it, I don't know if it ordinance state law or what, that you put a sign in your yard that says, "I'm a registered sex offender"?
No, sir. They cannot, we cannot do that. Actually, and there was a case law where a sheriff had been sued and taken to court over that.
How does the, how will the enforcement that's working, obviously, the person that calls you and says, hey, you know, this is, I'm thinking about this house or apartment complex, you say, no, you can't live there, will they move there? I mean, you're not going to know that.
Yes, sir, I will know that.
You will?
If they're moving into the City of Tyler, unless they do not register with me and they move to that area after they've been told not to, not only are they violating a child safety zone, but also they're, it's a felony violation also.
Well, I mean, but how do you, that's my question. How do we as a city know where they moved?
Without telling me? Well, we could have offenders living in the city right now because they have not registered, which means they're in a felony violation already.
Okay.
Which I have found a few of those in.
So, that's more if somebody finds out and reports it, and then there's something on the books to, to deal with it.
Most of the ones I deal with, you know, every, everything has its 10% or ones are issues, even though I'm dealing with offenders, felony offenders. Most of the ones who I deal with, they stay within the law. They, they don't want to get back to trouble again. They don't want to go back to prison because they're not looked upon very nicely in prison as it is as a sex offender, child sex offender. So, they're pretty adamant about staying on top of what they need to do. If they're going to move, they have Chapter 62 of the Criminal Code of Procedure, Basic States, within prior, seven days prior to any move, they have to notify me and then that they're going to move and where they're intending to move to. If they do not do that, it's a felony violation.
Because that's the part I didn't know, they had, they're supposed to notify.
Seven days. So, there's seven days prior to the move, and then once they do move, they have seven days, within seven days of that move, they have to notify whether it's me again or a new city. If they move to a new city, I notify the city if they're moving there.
So, all of the ones who are grandfathered into the Halloween, the October 30th, 31st, do they still have to abide by the life even though they're already living there? So, I guess that's a new, that's a new thing.
That's going to be something new part of it. So, yes, they will all be subject to that, not turning their lights on, inviting trick-or-treaters up to their house. For the ones who have child offenders, right now, they have 196 offenders. Of the 196 offenders, only 20 of them have adult victims. So, the other 176 have child victims. So, they will be required, and pardons and parole, TDC, they already require that when they're on probation or parole. We're just recommending that for the ones who are not on probation or parole, to ask children to come up to their house to get into trick-or-treat, things like that.
And this is on their records of the life, right?
Well, it works two ways in the state of Texas, ma'am. You have people who are registered for life, which means I have offenders from the age of 18 all the way to 86 who are registered with me at this time. If they have a lifetime registry, when it says lifetime, it means lifetime to the day they die. The only time they come off is when I find out they passed away. I get a death certificate and submit it to the state to have them removed. Other, the other step, the other part is they have a tenure, what's called a post-ten conviction, which means they're on the registry for 10 years from the day of their release from supervision, whether discharged directly from prison or they're released from probation or parole, they serve 10 years. And those are different offenses, many different offenses that they can do just 10 years. Juveniles, for example, if they have a sex offense as a juvenile, they're automatically a 10 years.
Any other questions, comments? I'll say this, thank you guys for, for what you're doing and pursuing this, and it's a problem that has to be tackled, so thank you.
I want to say a special thank you to these guys. They did an outstanding job doing research, legal, the law media, the law of information concerning constitutional issues, and we want to make sure that we did it right, and that the legal department did an outstanding job. GIS created these maps for us, did an outstanding job. But the work they put in here to take the foresight to put this in place, to get fixed for these individuals here, as they, they saw this and they envisioned it. They started getting phone calls from individuals that were seeking out cities that didn't have restrictions. So, sex offenders wanted to move to those areas because they didn't have these things put in place, and that was what sparked this conversation here. And I want to praise these, these individuals in the legal department for the work they did. And based on that, request that the city council approve attached ordinance amendment in Chapter 4, Article 6, created new sections 4-105 through 4-112 as described in the proposed ordinance amendment.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Morning, Cameron.
Morning.
Morning.
This is supposed to be a hot topic with the reporter bringing the microphone up here to get every word you say.
That's a little concerning, isn't it?
Mayor, Council, Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the City of Tyler. So, here today for the Intelligent Transportation System Year Two Traffic Signal Retiming Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates. But before I get into that contract piece, I want to give you an update and a summary of the Year One Traffic Signal Retiming that we did. Kind of going back to the master plan that we put in place, every year, we want to continue to retime traffic signals to keep things updated. Traffic patterns change, traffic volumes change, and we need to keep on top of that and not let things get behind. And so, in Year One, we retimed 18 intersections, and these graphics kind of give you a summary of those results in those corridors. So, this was the South Broadway corridor from Grande down to Market Square, along the Loop, from Loop and Broadway over to Loop and University, and then on Troup Highway from Lindberg up to Fleischer. So, that's what we, we did as part of the Year One, and that tied into other corridors that were done as part of the pilot study back in 2019 when we were doing the original master plan. So, you can see a brief summary there is reduction in annual delay of about 15%, but I think the big number there is you look at the number of hours of delay, that's equivalent to 26 years of savings of time in traffic that is estimated from these retiming benefits. And then if you put a dollar amount to that, so they have dollar amounts of how much does delay cost setting in traffic, that equates to about $7 million worth of savings. So, that kind of gives you a big picture. That's, a struggle with that is not, not money you get back in your pocket, but that's the benefit that we're generating from these types of projects. And then you see the overall delay there that you see reduction in on South Broadway of about 30% of what has experienced over the course of the different peak periods that we made improvements on. I will point out that, you know, signal timing is not a silver bullet. It doesn't address every concern. It doesn't make congestion go away, but it definitely improves your travel on a daily basis. But you see, there are examples, for example, between, on the Loop, between Paluxi and Troup Highway. That's a very congested area with lots of traffic. You have a lot of traffic moving coming from Troup and the Loop to Paluxi. And so, that's really an overcapacity area. And so, with the signal timing, what we're doing is trying to minimize that queuing and the congestion to keep things from clogging up. So, another example would be on Broadway between Grande, Robert E. Lee, and South Town. Again, very congested. The spacing between those intersections is not good for good progression. Also, the movements at those intersections restrict what we can do. So, until we look at other alternatives like routes to kind of give people different routes to get in and out of that area, you're still going to struggle with those issues. But we're doing the best we can and making improvements there. For example, this is just one graph, maybe a little hard to see, and this is kind of cherry picking some of the information, but this is on a weekend, so a Saturday, on South Broadway between Grande and Market Square going southbound. And you can see that almost a minute worth of travel time savings. So, we've reduced that delay by about a minute traveling through that area through these signal retiming efforts. And I think that's one of the areas you can see, you know, definitely improvements with what we're doing on these retiming. So, that's a very brief snapshot of the improvements that we've made through that Year One. And so, as we move into, yes, sir?
Question. So, on Broadway, to, to get that 30% reduction in time, do you just drive the speed limit, stay in the middle lane, and it happens? Or do you got to kind of be a little aggressive?
It's going to vary by time of day. So, you know.
Said that nicely.
Well, the police is here, so we want to be careful what we're going to tell you. But there's, say, at 5:00 p.m. on, you know, a weekday, you're not going to be able to drive the speed limit probably, 35 or 40. But there's, you know, how to, and we time those traffic signals depending on the congestion and what we can get through. So, it's going to really vary by the time of day what that speed may be that kind of gets you through the corridor better.
I can make it from the, I reckon, I can make it from the Loop to Cumberland now, and I might get to a stop at Grande, but I've noticed a big difference. But I do drive a little bit more aggressive than some people. So, it's working. Go ahead.
Any additional questions on the year one? All right. Well, as we move into the Year Two, we're looking at retiming 19 intersections. And so, those corridors you see on this map, so Front Street from Glenwood over to Fannin, Broadway from Front and Broadway down to Troup Highway, which also old Troup, that can be a little confusing. I myself kind of stumbled on that one. And then picking up a couple other side intersections of Fannin and Houston, because it's close to that corridor and how it interacts, see if there's any tweaks we need to make with that. And then on Fourth and Fifth, we want to look at Chilton College and Donnybrook because of those interactions with Broadway, what, what can we do better with those intersections? So, that's kind of where we came up, those nine intersections. One of the things, kind of looking at data, that's probably one of the areas that we've seen unreliable, you know, traffic patterns and whatnot with our timing. And so, that was kind of the focus. We also have higher volumes there with Front Street, a lot of traffic moving through that area as well. So, that's kind of why we're focusing on this, and that will also tie into some of the other corridors that we've done the past couple of years. So, with that, it is recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount of $114,000, $114.85 for the Intelligent Transportation System Master Plan Year Two Traffic Signal Retiming確定.
Any questions for Cameron?
Yeah, I guess one, Cameron, is this a forever deal that we should always be doing this?
Absolutely. Yes and no. So, ideally, you're retiming traffic signals every three to five years. So, it's, that's one of the things I think that we've lagged on, is you go long periods of time without retiming and things degrade. So, ideally, three to five years. And so, as you look at our master plan, when we get to years, say, seven, eight, nine, and 10, we're hoping to bump this up to more like 30 intersections a year so that we're hitting every intersection every three to five years. But the caveat there is my hope is as we get smarter with our, our traffic signal system and our data, we can kind of keep a baseline of, hey, we've got different metrics of how many vehicles are arriving on green, or what is the travel time through this corridor? If we see that staying consistent after five years, then there's no need to spend the money to retime it. But if after two years, that has started to degrade, is there something wrong with our equipment or has traffic patterns changed? We need to focus on tweaking this. So, I think what you're seeing right now are, it's been a while since some of this has happened, so there's bigger changes. But if we can do a better job of monitoring this with the equipment and the systems that we're putting in place, we can make more incremental changes and maybe we're not spending, you know, higher dollars every three to five years to retime each higher corridor. So, that's kind of where we want to go, but that's.
So, you go identify those areas, what, by traffic count? You put the equipment out there that does the counts?
Yeah. So, with the, so one piece is traffic signal performance metrics. So, that's part of some of the system we're putting in place now. So, you're looking at being able to see how many vehicles are arriving at an intersection on green, or you're seeing that travel time through different data sources that can be available to us. And then those are the things that we want to be able to focus on and see when, when changes are occurring.
Any other questions, comments for Cameron?
Move to approve M1.
Motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron.
Thanks, Cameron.
M2.
Hi, Kate.
Hi. Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
It's Director Rich Moore of Tyler. My first item here today is an engineering services contract with KSA Engineers for the West Second Street Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. So, with this tank, in the fall of 2019, like we do annually, we inspect the interior and exterior of all of our elevated and ground storage tanks. And that, this million gallon tank was found to be in need of some repair. There, there's a picture of it. This tank is located south of West Second Street, near Baxter Avenue, or sorry, not Baxter, Butler Avenue. The rehab is also included on the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality on our compliance schedule with them for our rehab of our tanks. And that is on the schedule for fiscal year 22, 23. So, we should be done, we should be complete with construction by the end. So we should be done, we should be complete with construction by the end of next fiscal year. So in this project, it includes sandblasting and coating of the interior and exterior of the tank, replacement of the tank interior ladder, the roof manway, replacement of the altitude valve, check valve, isolation valves, replacement of aircraft warning lights on top of the tank, and installation of a tank mixer with associated electrical and controls to go along with that tank mixer. So the consultant is KSA, the cost of the work is two hundred and ninety-two thousand, and the anticipated completion of design is August of 2022. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with KSA Engineers for the West Second Street Elevated Storage Tank Rehab Project in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Any questions for Kate?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Curtis, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And agenda item M-three, this is also an engineering services contract, this is with half and associates, or half associates for consent decree creek crossing repairs. So as you are fully aware, in 2017, the City of Tyler entered into a consent decree with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to address the city's aging wastewater collection system. As part of the consent decree, condition assessments have been performed on the sanitary sewer collection system, those assessments began in 2017. So the work for this, this project in particular is for creek crossings that have been assessed a D, as well as some point repairs identified needing a remedial repair. So on our creek crossings, we have hundreds of them, they are assessed and rated on a scale of A through E, A being pretty much brand new, E being it needs to be replaced. So these creek crossings, there are five in this project, they're all rated at a D, and they need to be remediated, and then there are also seven sanitary sewer point repairs included in this project. And for this, the engineering services that will be needing the design of these five D-rated creek crossing repairs, the engineering design of the seven point repairs, there'll be bid phase services, construction phase, for a fee of one hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services agreement contract in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars with half associates for the consent decree creek repairs, creek crossing repairs.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve M-three.
Okay.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kate. Now we are to the consent agenda, do we need to pull anything, or do we have a motion to approve as is?
Move to approve, consent agenda, as written.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You worked fast enough. City manager's report.
Yeah, and there's no actions to take on this one, so I don't have anything for Councilman Haney on this one, either. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, a few things of note, two as far as primary appreciations. One is, we prepared for a winter storm that really kind of fizzled out last week, and we're grateful for that, but I do want to just say, just amaze, say thank you to the city staff for the amazing work they did in preparation for that and being ready for something if more kind of intensive ice had formed and caused creation, or caused problems throughout our city. And so this was our police department and our fire department, the emergency operations center was opened up during that Thursday and Friday morning for our coordination. The streets department did a great job of continuing to put out pre-treatment and checking our city streets throughout there. Tyler Ward Utilities was continuing to monitor all of their different pieces, communications did a great job with getting their word out, but one that I also kind of really want to make sure I give a special thank you to is even our Rose Garden. And one of the things they did, just after having gone through ice storms and everything in the past, I don't know if you drove by the Rose Garden on Front Street during last week, you saw all of the tarps over all the rose plants and just the preparation they did in order to ensure that, you know, that investment was safeguarded, was pretty amazing. And so we're grateful for all of our city employees, for really, like I said, for the preparation they did and kind of the, you know, even though, like I said, nothing really formed from it, the amount of work they did to make sure that none, that no one actually really ran into any issues was amazing. Also want to talk about our appreciation of the sex offender ordinance that you just passed today, you know, you had the presentation, you took the action, but one of the things that y'all may not sometimes understand, DRC, is just the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, the amount of research and coordination, and this one was especially intense between the police department and legal, and that, in making sure that we really understood the law as it was written by our legislators, and that the application of that hopefully bears no future lawsuits to us as well as safeguards our citizens, and especially our children in our community. And so with the work that Detective Simmington did, Officer Freeman and Lieutenant Sheffield, along with our assistant city attorney, April Early, was just pretty amazing, and so I want to also extend my thank you to them for their work on this project. And a couple of things, just a note that y'all have been involved in, and some of y'all have actually participated, the Tyler Bike, we had back on Saturday, January twenty-ninth, the Tyler Trees Committee and the City of Tyler's Urban Forestry Division hosted our annual Arbor Day celebration at Bergfeld Park and T.R. Griffith Park, and so they planned, they had two hundred and fifty people attend, which is very amazing. The total is seventy-eight trees planted between the two parks, and so I know we had numerous council members and mayors, mayors being lifted up to the top of trees, and we've talked to them about that, about risk issues there, and so it's just, y'all may want to actually think, you know, you've got the mayor pro tem, that may actually come into play at one point with the amount of risk that this mayor sometimes puts himself.
I tried to get in, but they wouldn't let me in.
Puts himself in, and so thankfully, yeah, everyone, that would turn out to be an incredible event for all. We do want to thank our Tyler Bike Club for a recent addition in repairs that they did out at Lindsay Park, they invested five thousand dollars in the project of building as far as some different trails and crossings through there. It's one of those things that I think, you know, it's, if you're, that, you know, non-bicyclists such as myself don't necessarily understand is just how Tyler is viewed in the bike trail kind of world, especially here in Texas, as a destination point, and a lot of that is due to the hard work of our Tyler Bike Club and our Parks and Recreation Department as they build just really, just in intensive and incredible trails through our different parks. And then also just a point of note about the Rose Complex, if you drive by the Rose Complex, you see the tilt walls going up, you see the frame, you kind of get an idea of the size of the building. We were notified about our first delay that regarding the electrical switchboards a few weeks ago, and so the ship date was delayed until September of 2022, but our architect and WRL, our contractor out there, are working on finding different alternatives to see what they can do to be able to continue with everything that needs to happen, as well as maybe getting additional as far as switchboards in, so that we can be able to continue trying to make sure that that facility is open in October. But that's been our first kind of hiccup that we've had, and we're working on making sure what we can do to kind of get over that.
That it?
That's it, sir.
No update on Smalley Pig?
I was actually, thought about it, but I was like, you know what, I'm not bringing Biggie Smalls, or Piggy Smalls into this. And so, but as the mayor asks, Piggy Smalls was, I hate to say apprehended, because he never really did anything wrong, he was just a free-ranging pig, free, just out there living his dream, but the problem is just the hazard that he posed to traffic and to people along Rose Rubman Trail. We did just kind of a point, thank you, Mayor, actually, this was actually, is a great thing to talk about, because one of the things I want to make sure is, we occasionally at times, through especially our police department, hire different trappers with, as far as the feral hog issues that we see around in our community, especially on kind of some of the outlying parts of our city, and so we actually were able to go to this trapper that we use and be able to work with him to be able to kind of set the traps and be able to catch Piggy Smalls, although Stephanie Franklin probably could have caught him as she was feeding him this weekend, and so why she just didn't wrangle the pig herself is a different question. But we then take the pig and go to animal services where they then find a home for the pig. And so for those who are like, well, you know, do they, do they go and, you know, do they, do they kill the pig, do they just do, our animal control and our, and our trappers that we work with, work for, for Piggy Smalls, he was found a new home, for feral hogs and the like, yes, those are disposed of through other means, but those are different issues, so. You brought it up, sir.
There was a feature on one of the news, one of the stations last night on Piggy Smalls, so, yeah, it was very tasteful.
Yeah, I will say, it, it's been fun to watch the placement posts because they've all been liked and, and fun, and I see Leanne back there who petted the pig the other day, or Piggy the other day, so.
She could have also caught him, if you, I've been rodeos, I see how they grab them and just kind of hold them.
Anyway, enough of this, so I will entertain, that's all we have, so I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.